Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of Delray Beach's regular workshop meeting schedule for Tuesday, May 9th, 2023 at 6:00 PM in the Arts Garage. I'm sorry, the Arts Warehouse. Please call a roll, please.
Mr. Frankel.
I'm present.
Mr. Long.
Present.
Mr. Boylston. Ms. Burns. Mayor Petrollia.
Here. I'm going to remind everybody, just because we have feedback, anytime you're not speaking, just turn your microphones off so that they can not get the feedback on the recorded part of it. And so we will...
Excuse me, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
It's me, right here. Katari.
Oh.
We just need to do a roll call for Old School Square Center for the Arts.
I'm sorry, be right ahead.
For Old School Square Center for the Arts, our Chair, Patty Jones.
Here.
Chair Emeritus Frances Burke. Board Members Elise Nail.
Here.
Jeff Pearlman.
Here.
Jim Chard.
Here.
And me, Patty Maguire.
So we're going to start. I am kind of a little bit at a loss. I've asked over and over again what we're doing. And so what I'm going to do is just open it up, starting to my left with the Vice Mayor, if you'd like to begin. The floor is yours.
Great, thank you, Mayor. So I'm excited to finally be here. This is a workshop that should have happened a long time ago. And I don't mean just under two years ago when we were in the middle of a really tough time and I was asking for this workshop, but it probably should have came long before that, before we even got to that point, to make sure that we are all on the same page and we're all rowing in the same direction. And that's not just us in Old School Square, but that's really us and a lot of organizations in this city. We don't take the time to sit down and meet and share visions and make sure we're all heading in the right direction. So one of the documents that I've brought up for the last five years as a city commissioner, and Mayor Pearlman, you're going to be very familiar with this document, is the Coletta Report from 2006. It was funded by the CRA. It is a public document. It's available on the CRA website. It's about, it's called Creative Authentic Intimate. And the original plan was to put a creative city collaborative, not the one that ended up morphing into the Arts Garage, so that we were all on the same page. This would be an entity, this would be a cultural board, a cultural council, if you will, for the City of Delray Beach that would set the vision for all of us and to make sure we're all heading in the right direction. Now unfortunately, only very, very few tasks were achieved inside that, inside, in that document. So I've been revisiting that document and I just want to, I just want to read a blurb real quick from this document because I thought it was really relevant as I was looking through it this week. And I'm just going to take a few pieces. Throughout its life, Delray Beach has demonstrated a creative nature, an inventive, can-do spirit. But during times, cultural development has moved in fits and starts. And this is to quote one of the observers of the Delray Beach scene. There have clearly been some missteps and failures. Now remember, this was in 2006, but I think it's pretty relevant today. These are important learning experiences. Like all cities, Delray Beach has pockets of distrust and disillusionment. The good news is that all are passionate about their city and its ambitions, as evidenced in Delray Beach's level of citizen involvement and input. Even those who feel bruised are eager to embark on plans to make Delray Beach the most creative city that it can be. And I think those are important words for where we're at today. I hope today's conversation is a collaborative one. I hope that it is one that looks forward and not backwards. And I look forward to some ideas for what's next in our relationship. Because we're still going to be here and you're still going to be here. And what does the future of our relationship look like? And so that's, that's my goal for today, is what's, what's the next step for Old School Square in the City of Delray Beach?
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Okay. So, good evening, everyone. I just wanted to say that, you know, as I said during the campaign, I did not agree with the way the, the whole incident with Old School Square was handled, as with other things in our community. But I look forward tonight to sort of mending fences and some open dialogue, honest dialogue, so that we can move forward in our city. We have a great cultural center and I would like to see it continue so that it is serving everyone in our community to the best of its ability. So I'm looking forward to some positive comments and some open dialogue. You know, we have people that have some great ideas, we have some very bright people with some solutions. And I just think that talking about things sometimes, just, it makes all the difference. So having this, I'm just looking forward to and happy that this day has come, that we're actually going to have some open dialogue to talk about ways to move forward and what's best for Delray. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Frankel.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, good evening. Some ways it's sad to be here, in some ways it's great to be here. I've stated over the last couple of years, I feel as if the relationship between the Old School Square Board and the city was ended because of subjective reasons and not objective reasons, and I stand by that. While things were not perfect, I think things can be fixed. I recall several years ago, at the Arts Garage, there were problems. It was languishing. There was many accusations. And what happened then is, I like to give Commissioner Boylston, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Boylston credit, it was fixed the Delray Way. That's my hopes for the beginning of this conversation, to fix what is necessary at the heart of our city that has been closed and dark for way too long. So I'm looking forward, this opportunity is the start of something good to come. Thank you.
Deputy Vice Mayor.
So the benefit of going next to last is, my colleagues have all said it so well, there's not much left for me to say. I'll simply say this, I'm here tonight for Old School Square, the cultural heart of our city. And I'm privileged to sit among this group who was a steward of that institution for three decades and who better to have a collaborative dialogue with than you guys, a dialogue that I thought was unfortunately missing when certain decisions were made. And I'm hoping that now we can start on a new pathway, a collaborative one, and start to heal some of the cultural division that exists in our city right now.
Thank you, Mr. Long. The floor is yours.
Dear Madam Mayor, City Commissioners, City Attorney, and City Manager. On behalf of the Board of Directors of Old School Square Center for... Can you hear me now? On behalf of the Board of Directors of Old School Square Center for the Arts, we want to thank you for inviting us here today. We look forward to being a resource for the City of Delray Beach and the community to make Old School Square the best it can be, whatever that looks like. Old School Square Center for the Arts is a nonprofit, community-run volunteer group, and we believe that our institutional knowledge and experience of running the site for 30-plus years and producing over 3,000 events and programs a year are a benefit to the community. We believe this will be the first of several meetings to work out any challenges or issues to help the City of Delray Beach bring Old School Square back to its glory. Thank you again for having this workshop with us today. We look forward to the future and the healing of our community. We are truly here to help. Did I go? I'm going to carry it over to Frances. Is it on? Okay, thank you. Again, thank you, all of you, for inviting us to an event, we call it an event, that we have looked forward to for over two years. This is the core, best opportunity, when a community and its citizens get to come together and share and speak about common goals and the manner in which to benefit our citizens moving forward. For those in our community listening and may not know, here's a quick history 101. The Old School Square site began in the center of town in the late 1800s. These buildings served as part of the Palm Beach County school system. In the mid-1980s, the school board swapped the Old School Square site for a more suburban site, and left behind was an area of land right smack in the center of town with a chain link fence around it, three buildings in major disrepair, no grass, no trees, a site most folks drove by trying not to look at because it was so sad and forlorn. The downtown also was in major decline. No one came after 5:00. Safety was offset by fear. Can you hear me okay? Thank you. And then a community was born. Citizens began to imagine a different place. The spirit of its past and a desire to be part of its future was born. Old School Square with its history, its central location, and a town wanting to find itself changed the mentality of a community and a downtown Delray became possible. Before long, no pun, everyone was on board. Not all agreed about the what, but all did in fact agree about the that. And the that was that Old School Square would be a community-driven, not-for-profit, volunteer endeavor, and that it would be a partnership. You've all heard about the decade of excellence, right? Truly, it was more than one decade. And the trust built over these decades was the secret sauce, the magical ingredient for success. With diminishing trust, all best efforts cannot be piled on shaky ground. But if it's important to remember the grounds of Old School Square are where the Olympic torch was passed on its way to the Atlanta Olympics, and if it's important to believe Old School Square is a community gathering place, as when our hearts and spirits were broken on 9/11 and we gathered to share our grief and hope for a better future, and if when we shared our sacred grounds with the students of Stoneman Douglas to weep over their loss of friends and innocents which nearly killed their spirit, and Atlantic High School students spontaneously left their campus and walked to Old School Square to embrace these students, that's what the heart and soul of Delray Beach really looks like. And if it's important to understand the weeping and the singing of the friends praying for Corey Jones, their brother, whose life had been snatched from us forever. The grounds of Old School Square is Delray's Field of Dreams. It's Delray's National Cemetery. It's Delray's Christmas Morning. It's the community's expression of laughter, fun, art, dance, and hope. It's where citizens come to refill their emotional gas tanks. Old School Square is your center, your gathering place, your voice. That is the formula for its magic. Today, with you and our community, we're trying to figure out a solution. We have a formula. You, the citizens spoke, and we listened. You, the citizens proposed, and we looked for a solution. Our neighbors cried, and we wiped their tears. You sang and danced and performed and attended and volunteered and served and supported and most importantly, believed. We are all of us, not me, not our board. We are all of us. In none of this were we ever a management company. We were all volunteers, working out of a love for our community, and we still are. We all lived the mission because it was written by all of us. Old School Square should be a real gathering place, an expression of all of our citizens, their voices, your voice, a community choir, if you will. Let's find a new way to turn up our hearing aids and listen. Old School Square grew by standing on the shoulders of those who came before us. And by doing so, we saw a glimpse of our own future. We all began to create it together. Let's not stop now. And now it's my privilege to introduce Elizabeth, Elizabeth, Elise. Good. Elise Johnson Nail. She's a talented businesswoman. She's one of the few people who came to Old School Square, having not been a resident for very long at Old School Square. She volunteered first, and then she became a board member, and then partly during our pandemic, she became our leader. She's a successful businesswoman. She is clairvoyant when it comes to solutions. We are so fortunate to have her here, and no one can be the voice of the challenges before us than this talented lady, Elise. Not Elizabeth.
Oh my gosh, how do I follow Frances? Okay. Thank you, everyone, for giving me the opportunity to share my thoughts today. I know as I'm talking, when I say us, I mean we. Like Frances, the City of Delray Beach, you know, to rebuild Old School Square into Delray's vibrant community gathering place and cultural arts center into an even better version of what it was before is going to be challenging. It's going to be really challenging. These challenges will be faced by any organization, any entity, citizens group, nonprofit, volunteer board. The first challenge that I see is reestablishing trust. Trust between the city and the organization, or organizations, that make the facility alive again to its true capacity and working together in a partnership that is true and real. I see a challenge with the trust of the donors and the sponsors. What am I? Move it away. Okay. That the organization will still be there. Trust for the staff, the volunteers, the teachers, the students, that it will be there when they sign up for a class or apply for a job. Trust for the vendors, that the art show is going to happen next year, that they've scheduled and worked hard for, or the Poetry Fest or whatever else. Trust for the agents and the promoters that have scheduled acts and routed them, and they're going to be next year, is it going to be there? Trust for the vendors and the brides. The next challenge that I see is tied together, is time and money. It takes time to raise the money to put together a cultural arts center. Grants, the process can be up to a year to apply for a grant, get it awarded, and receive those funds. Sponsorships and donors, it requires time to develop long-term relationships, commitments, and get donations. Fundraisers, time to plan. This isn't anything that can happen overnight. Negotiating leases and terms and relationships, it takes time and careful planning and considering all of the parties that are involved. Negotiating and organizational planning for whatever entities are going to be within those walls and on those grounds. Goal-setting objectives, missions. Time for chariots to include all of our community and diversity. Setting objectives, trying to figure out how we're going to serve every community and not deciding for them what they want to see programmed and to be available and what classes, but to listen to them and find out what can we offer you, what will bring you downtown to your Delray and your community gathering place. We also need time for scheduling. You're going to put on a cabaret. Sometimes it takes a year to get those people there. We need to trust that the organization that books them will still be there a year later in order to fulfill that. The next challenge that I mentioned briefly is diversity. It's extremely important. Delray has grown, evolved, changed, and remained the same. We have, how can Old School Square truly be inclusive? We need to ask those questions. We need to go into the different parts of town and see what the communities there want and try to bring everybody together. So that's a big challenge for anyone. And like I said, when I say we, I mean we, all of us here in Delray Beach. The last challenge I'd like to talk about right now is working together. You know, the lawsuit between the city and the citizen volunteers of the nonprofit, Old School Square Center for the Arts, has been settled. No matter who programs Old School Square, it's time to move forward, to heal, to reestablish relationships, to build trust within our community, to work together and not have two or three or four camps. It will take hard work and require a commitment by everyone, but we can do it together. And I would like to introduce a mentor, Mr. Jeff Pearlman.
Thank you. Can you hear me? I guess so. Again, thanks for the opportunity to be here today. And I guess I'm here to kind of sum up the formal remarks and then I hope we can have a conversation. We are not here with an ask, other than that we would respectfully request a seat at the table as we, the collective we, the community, figure out the future of Old School Square. While we feel that institutional knowledge is valuable, we also understand that this is an opportunity for a reset. As Frances noted, Old School Square led the rebirth of our downtown 30-plus years ago. A lot has changed since then, but this civic project remains important to Delray Beach. We have a chance to bring the site back to life. We are not asking to do that. We are asking for a process that will involve the community and to be included in that process. In other words, we are here to help. I think we all share a common passion for the site and for the community. I was here back when Frances, I think she had pigtails at the time, if I remember correctly, led the charge to restore the site. She and others chose to do that through the arts and culture. And we, the community, were successful, not perfect, not flawless, but successful. Old School Square certainly generated economic development, but it did something even more important than that. It built a sense of community, and that's what we need now more than ever. I'm proud of Old School Square's efforts over the years and proud of the people who have been involved, the donors, the volunteers, the staff. These are good people. Yes, we have divisions in our town, but bringing this place back to be all it can be and all it should be should be a process that heals, that builds community, that unifies us. Division is not new to our city or to any city, but what made Delray different, and I would argue special, was our willingness to sit down and talk, our willingness to work out differences with our neighbors. We're neighbors, we're all neighbors. Old School Square was the place we gathered, as Frances noted. It was where we celebrated when we won the All-America City Award, is where, it's where we mourned when tragedy struck. It was where we held our race relations meetings and where we met with neighbors to forge a master plan for our downtown. We can do that again and be even more inclusive this time around. So the opportunity is to involve all who are interested. We have a model, a community-based nonprofit, that we happen to feel is a good model, but maybe there is a better model out there. Still, we don't believe Old School Square should be run by government alone. It is not a job, in our opinion, for an out-of-town organization either. We believe it should be a partnership between the community, our government, and a community-based organization. I'll conclude by saying that I think we have an opportunity to bring the community together on this project, and I hope we do. I hope we take the time to address the issues that my friend Elise mentioned, because they're real. We have to rebuild our foundation. If we simply put effort on top of a shaky foundation, it'll all be wasted. The best way forward might be to take a few steps back and talk like we are doing today, like we have always done, the Delray Way, as Commissioner Frankel notes. So I thank you for this opportunity.
You know, forgive me if I don't feel all warm and fuzzy. I'm just going to put it out on the line. The commission was confronted with several issues that happened at Old School Square, and to have not reacted or done anything would have been a dereliction of our duties. There's one of them sitting out in the audience that made that decision. I'm the other one that's surviving on this commission. And not only did we not sit down, we made a decision, but we tried to work with, with the Old School Square Center for the Arts. You all came in many times and asked for forgiveness and asked for help. I sat down with you, Elise, I sat down with you, Frances, sat down with many of you over the years, and even up to recent times. But things got completely out of control. There is a big difference between what happened at the Arts Garage and Spady when they ran into some financial issues. They opened up their books to the City of Delray Beach and said, "Help us. Help us." And we did. We got the opposite, opposite coming from Old School Square Center for the Arts. And when you're talking about $750,000 to $900,000 a year of taxpayer money going into this organization and a dollar a year to take over the entire campus, that's a heck of a lot of money and responsibility for those of us who are in charge of making sure that that money is being spent properly. So forgive me if I don't feel warm and fuzzy, because not only did they turn around immediately and sue the city, but they sued me personally and the two other ladies that basically were sitting up here trying to do the city's job and holding somebody accountable for taxpayer dollars and for the damage that was left behind in the building that created the darkness that you're experiencing on campus, on that campus. So that is the reason why we're here. Moving forward, I have no problem moving forward. I don't, I never did. The problem is, is that you've got to be accountable before you move forward. You have to look back. You can't just move forward and pretend like nothing happened. We have 990 forms outstanding. We have PPP funds and money that we spent from the CRA that we don't know how it was spent to this day, has never been made clear. And there is an investigation currently going on, a federal investigation. So to jump back in, I don't know where we're going with that. From my perspective, we have an organization that we can trust, that's over on the campus and doing it. and doing a hell of a job. Yeah, they can't make, they can't make the Crest Theater bright and active because it was destroyed. So we're in the process of putting that back together on taxpayer dollars. Taxpayer dollars. There was a lawsuit, not instigated by us, but we did file counterclaims for those damages to protect the city's and the people's property. And those were settled. So the taxpayers are now going to hold on to that and going to have to pay for it, period. We have no ability to be able to go backwards. So I think it's premature, not out of the potential line that we could never work together, but unless and until the financial part of the organization for which you all represent here is cleared up, I think it would be absolutely wrong of us to move backwards and into a relationship with the organization that's sitting before us. And I think that right now, we have it in good hands, people who we do trust and are doing an awesome job on the campus and keeping it busy and keeping it active. They have done a great job. And before that, the city did a great job. We didn't let that place go dead quiet. We just picked up and moved on and kept as many balls in the air, given the circumstances, as we could. So I think we're a little bit premature in what maybe you're asking. I know that, Mr. Pearlman, you said, "We don't have an ask here," but I'm hearing asks. But I think that at this point in time, it would not be advisable of our city to move forward with any sort of relationship until at least the investigation is cleared up. Thank you.
Well, I'm not here for a debate. I'm here for a conversation, and I could refute just about everything you said.
Well, it's the truth.
It's not the truth. It's your truth.
No, it's absolutely the truth.
And I'm not going to debate you on your turf.
Absolutely the truth. And you know something? We were never allowed to come back.
We're not here to litigate. We had our issues with you guys as well.
I'm not litigating. I am explaining what happened, and we have never had the opportunity on this side of the fence because not only was the city being sued, but we were being personally sued and we were told not to respond. So we never got that truth out.
When someone kicks you in the teeth after 32 years of service, I know you well enough, you would fight back. That's what we did. That's what we did.
Sir, all you needed to do was to bring forward the financials that were required.
We did.
No, you were not into this.
We brought the financials. We produced late audits because we had COVID and an audit that quit. Those audits were clean. So the allegations you're making are libelous.
No, they're not.
And we want to move on.
That's what happened.
We want to move on. You won't let us move on. And I do want to say about the taxpayers picking up the bill for the Crest Theater and the Commercial Kitchen and the museum, we had that paid for with a donor.
Yes.
We were thrown out.
No.
We got thrown out.
No, sir. You are getting into a debate, and I am going to correct that.
I'm trying to set the record straight.
Sir, hold on just a second. I have the floor. That is not true. We actually, five members on the commission agreed to allow for the entire renovation to move forward. 100% of the commission agreed to that with one stipulation, that a bond be put in the city's name to protect the public asset. That was refused according to our city attorney. It never was allowed, and that was because one of your board members was doing that renovation, and he would not put the bond to protect the city, so they shut it down. That's what happened. That's the truth behind it.
Well, we have a different version of the truth, apparently. But because we didn't speak, we ended up with a bill for the taxpayers. So I wish we could move on to a conversation, because this is turning out into a debate. Let me make it very clear. We don't have an ask. We don't want anything.
Great. Perfect. Perfect. Well, I, listen. I spoke, excuse me. Excuse me. There's no need for that. We know that there's half and half here. Just be considerate. Considerate. Everybody up here is trying to speak, and we don't need that kind of.
Mayor, when you have a moment?
Yeah, hold on just a minute.
Yep.
I don't want to get into an argument either, and I do believe that there is a possibility of going forward. I just don't believe that it can be right now. That's my opinion. I spoke my truth, and I did get the truth out there, and the backup does prove that truth. All right. So let me go to, I think I saw that Commissioner Frankel had put his hand up first.
I'm glad we're having a conversation, and I do have some thoughts, because while I do agree the DDA has done a good job with the Crest Theater, I'm sorry, the museum, the Crest Theater and the other classrooms and other areas, I think would be better served, programmed and run by 501(c)(3) and not a taxing authority. I heard comments about rebuilding the foundation, because I think that's important for all of us. What thoughts, what ideas do you have to go forward to rebuild that? I think, at least in my opinion, you have a majority of the city commission that wants to rebuild it with you. So what are your thoughts on how you would like to go forward in that regard?
I'd like to defer to somebody else on that. Again, I'll agree with the mayor. I don't think clearly that we're ready. I can feel the tension in the room. We're saying, "Let's lower the temperature," because to the vice mayor's point, we're not going anywhere. But we don't have an ask. We just want to be involved in our community in a site that we love and care about and have donated to. And we don't feel we've done anything wrong, and I'm aware of no investigation.
Well, I know you don't have an ask. I have a couple asks. In speaking to some of the members privately, the thought was the maybe first steps in establishing a relationship would be starting the art classes back, which were so important for the community. What thoughts did you have that you could share publicly in that regard?
Adam, thank you for that question. As you know, we.
Keep speaking the microphone. I think they're having trouble. Just got to speak right into it. Thanks.
Thanks for that question. We really do look forward to working with the city, but of course, when we got notice of this meeting, we were unclear of exactly what you were going to be asking. So that's something that, you know, we have discussed as a board, and it's something, you know, that if you're serious about, we need more conversations about it. And it's something that, you know, we need to bring back to the board to see if you're willing to do it and what we're willing to do, you know, what the circumstances are. It's just something we would need to discuss further.
So the interesting thing is, we live in a government that's run by a consensus, and I can just speak for my feelings that I want to go forward and repair this relationship. Obviously, I have to hear from a couple of my colleagues to see if the consensus is there. So hopefully, you know, we'll go down the line and hear from my colleagues, but, you know, I know you keep saying there's no ask. Being here was great enough.
You're making a request. We're not asking for anything.
Yeah, you're making a request, and it's something we can bring back to the board.
What I'm hearing, Commissioner, is that, you know, we have experience with art classes. Patty McGuire has done that for years and years. So we could certainly consider that, bring that back to the board, and figure out what that would take to get going.
Okay. I'll defer my time, and, oh, go ahead, please.
I just want to add, like you, we have a consensus as well. We are a board. We came here to have a communication, try to figure out where you all are, how we could all work together. We respect the DDA. It's done a great job. They have a lease. We in no way, shape, or form would want to interfere with that lease. It's wrong. It's not fair, and we don't want to do that. We're here to see how we can help. We have a lot of institutional knowledge. We have a lot of a donor base, a volunteer base, a teacher base, following base. We have a lot of hard workers behind us that would love, of course, to see some things that we used to do back in those buildings. I would be not telling the truth if I said, "No, I'm not interested at all." But this is a conversation, and this is a time to figure out, what is the new beginning? How do we all fit? How do we put the past behind us and all work together for a better downtown Delray, Old School Square campus? And yes, Adam, we have the ability to run classes. I don't know if that would be able to happen in the fall. There's a lot to be figured out. You know, the teachers need to trust that the classroom will be open again in January. There's another election coming up. I'm just going to say it. We want everyone to work together and not be politicized. Let's be a community again and not a back-and-forth kind of thing.
I needed to ask a follow-up, just based on your comments. What's the status of your relationships with your volunteers and donor bases?
We have been continuing to offer the arts, as you may or may not know. We've done Lunafest. We're doing our six-by-six. We're giving scholarships to children, and our volunteer base is at every event. They help us. We get emails and phone calls from other people that want to be involved, and so that would probably, the volunteer base would probably be the easiest thing for us to put back together. It was their purpose. People love to volunteer at Old School Square and see their community and say hi to their friends, and it was a wonderful experience. So I would say that's a huge strength that we have and why we felt it was good to come to the table with you all and talk about, would you like us to help you? Help our city together.
Okay, thank you. I'll defer at this time.
I don't think anyone wants to move forward without looking back. I wanted today's conversation to be about looking forward, because I didn't want that to happen. There are a lot of things that we need to figure out as an organization, and probably the only thing I did agree with what the mayor said is that it'd be premature to move forward with anything specific as far as our relationship. I think a lot of people are going to be let down today. There's no drama. There's no big decisions being made. This is a lot of finally allowing Old School Square to have a voice in a public arena with the commission, and honestly, for myself and Commissioner Frankel to have a voice, and of course, our new colleagues as well. That's what today is about, right? And it's about listening. I think any next steps that I'm going to recommend today are going to be more tied to a much bigger picture than our relationship. It's going to be tied back to the Coletta Report and about a cultural council that could help steer the ship and could help guide the Old School Square campus in the future. And I think that's very important, and I'll get to that in a second. I hope we don't look at the audiences half and half. I hope I look out and I just see one Delray Beach and that we're all looking to do the same thing together, which is, and I don't know what that model looks like. Honestly, I think we could have had a conversation with Old School Square two years ago, and we could have all agreed on a 12-month transition period. Maybe, you know, the first 30, 35 years was great, and the next 30, 35 years, you would help us transition to that. That could have been the outcome of an open conversation. Because remember, it was unanimous to cut the $750,000 to $900,000 funding from the CRA. You were about to operate, Old School Square was about to operate, without any of the CRA funds. I personally wanted to see what that year looked like, because if you could go out and raise those funds and operate it the way you were operating it, that'd be a pretty good deal for the taxpayers. Not one dollar, not one dollar going towards you. I don't know a lot of cities that can say that about their cultural arts center, especially not one as diverse as Old School Square. And then on top of that, you are funding a million-dollar renovation to a historic building and making it ADA compliant. I kind of wanted to see what that looked like. Even if you didn't run it perfectly, I'd probably take it, because I got 350, 450 other things I have to worry about that are more broken than that in the city. But we are where we are, and, you know, I'm going to go back to this report, and I really have no, I've recommended it to all of my colleagues. And we have so many, we have so many of these, by the way. We have so many plans with so many things that we didn't do, and we really need to go back to them as a city. And in this one here, this is the top recommendation out of this report and is still relevant today. The centerpiece of this plan is the creation of the Delray Beach Creative City Collaborative. Now, for conversation today, I'm going to call it the Delray Beach Cultural Council as the umbrella organization for culture. The primary function of the Delray Beach Cultural Council is to strategically target culture as a competitive advantage and increase funding to enlarge the cultural scene, trigger innovation and creative strategies, fund existing cultural groups, and champion new initiatives to claim Delray Beach's unique niche. And when it says funds, it means both public and private or from a partnership with a nonprofit. But if it's determined that a public-private partnership is not practical at that time, the city of Delray Beach should form the Creative City Collaborative as a public body responsible for executing the recommendations of this plan. There are a lot of really good ideas still in this plan. So I'm hoping that as a city, we can move forward, we can revisit this plan, and that we can appoint a cultural council, one that can potentially work with you, Old School Square, to have a public charrette about what's important in this plan. And that'd be a sign of good faith as we're trying to build trust together. Not necessarily something for you to get out of that process. I'm asking for your help with that process. The subject is not just Old School Square. It's culture in the city. It's what should we prioritize in this cultural plan together? And I know a lot of you have been through charrettes. Charrettes for Old School Square, charrettes for our downtown, charrettes for our entire city. So that's what I would like to see. I would like to see my colleagues go down a direction, revisiting this plan and putting a cultural council together, and Old School Square working with that cultural council to do a public charrette and make sure that everybody in Delray gets input on where we're going next, where we're moving forward. I think that would be an excellent first step together.
Ms. Bird, do you have anything?
Well, I just want to say that, you know, I've lived long enough to know that it takes more than one meeting to heal hurt, and I think this is a start. It's obvious that it runs very deep. So this is a beginning, and I'm happy that we at least got the first conversation out. The mayor said that it's premature. I have to agree that it's premature if there are still unanswered questions that have to be laid out. It's obvious that there's some things not clear, but we do have to move on for the sake of the community. So I heard some words, and, you know, the teacher in me just started circling some things, but I heard healing, core, central location, soul of Delray Beach, citizens, together, challenge, reestablish trust, sponsors, donors, time, planning, listen, diversity, working together, commitment, rebirth, successful, community, process of healing, working out our differences, more inclusive, the Delray Way. And I would just like to say that I am very interested in joining my colleague on this thing that Ryan just talked about, Commissioner Boilston, about this council and the plan. I'm very interested in learning more about that so that we can move together and heal. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Long?
Thank you. I don't think this meeting's premature at all. I don't think it's ever premature to try and heal a divided community, and that's frankly what we are right now, unfortunately. I think what we should take away from this meeting today is that you all can see, and your board can see, that you have a reliable consensus that wants to work with you, that wants to give you a seat at the table as we move forward with a community-based plan like Vice Mayor Boilston suggested. And I can say that during my campaign, I got email after email every week about the classes, more than just about anything else. People really miss those classes. And I would love to. And I would love to figure out a tangible step forward, something you could take back to your board to talk about. So we could work together on a plan to figure out how to do that. Because what I see here is a group that has more institutional knowledge than anyone about this campus. You have an active volunteer base. You have a donor network. And no one else can offer those sort of resources to reestablish some of the things that we have lost from this institution. So it would behoove us to work with you. And I'm interested and I think you have a consensus here that is interested in having a productive dialogue with you and not just relitigating campaign talking points. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mayor?
Yep.
Look. I was just going to say, Vice Mayor Boilston, I think that's an excellent idea. I know we spoke about reaching out more in the community, charrette-wise. Your idea for council, I think is very good as well. So I will also join with you. So I think there's a consensus for that.
Okay. And just for the record, not my idea. It's all in a report that everybody can read by, by a very respected organization, the Coletta Organization. And a lot of input of people before my time. So I really would say to all the residents that to read this, read this report. And if any of my colleagues haven't had a chance to go through it and revisit it, it's just, there's so many things in it that's so relevant for today. But I think next, next steps for your side, if you agree, you know, what does that foundation look like? You want to rebuild the foundation of trust. What does that look like? And it probably, it probably has nothing to do with the campus. You're an organization that are operating right now in Delray Beach. You're in our schools. You're still having events. You're raising money. You're writing checks. So we can work together on something and then we'll, we'll talk about the campus another day, right? The foundation begins between these two organizations. So what does that look, what does that look like? And for us, I think we need to have a conversation about this cultural council that is presented in this, in this document. It allows us to appoint an organization that would sit above the Old School Square campus. It gives us, us the control, us the power. And then who that, that cultural council recommends partnering with? The DDA or Old School Square or an organization that we haven't even met yet? They could give us input on that. And then we still make the final decision, especially as it has anything to do with taxpayer dollars. I think those are two good steps for both, both sides. And then we'll see, we'll see where it takes us.
Anything else?
I'd like to say a word if I could. I think we all, despite our differences, have the same vision, that Delray Beach be the most vibrant cultural community in all Palm Beach County. I think we may have been at one time. I think we can be again. And I think we owe it to the citizens, the voters, the stakeholders, the downtown businesses. And we're here to help the commission think through the way to do that. I've been a little bit involved in this six by six exhibit. And I have to tell you, it's a very emotional experience. We, we talk about the employees. We talk about the donors, the artists of this town that depend on Old School Square for emotional support, for meaning in their life, for learning new things that they didn't know they could ever do. We have over 400 pieces of art that were donated over the course of the last couple of months. They're going to be sold for $35 a piece. So everybody can be a collector. They don't have to be a Rockefeller to be a collector of really, really fine art. And I think that's something that we're here to say that we can offer as a healing process for the city. I've personally lost a lot of personal friends over the last two years. The city has been split through the middle. It's time to get us back together again. And I think the cultural council is a great way to do it.
Okay. I think that we'll probably have another meeting about this probably with the city commission, I presume, to talk about the cultural council and how that we would set it up.
Sounds good.
All right.
Yeah, just real quick, Vice Mayor Boilston, I'm glad you dug up that report because it's a great, it's really a great report and there's a lot of things in there that is very relevant today. And it was done at the time I went and I found her. And to position us in the region because we didn't have, nor did we want, a Cravis Center or the Broward Center for the Performing Arts. Our positioning, our brand was creative, intimate and authentic. And that was kind of fitting the Delray vibe. So I'm, I'm really happy to hear that you're on that wavelength. I think what Commissioner Burns said, I don't know how anyone can disagree with any one of those words that she put out there. I do have to push back gently on the, on the $750,000. Those grants were paid in arrears. There were grants for mission accomplished. If you didn't accomplish the mission, you didn't get the money. And they were paid in arrears. So we followed the A-Guide. And we, we, we did the services and the money was granted by the CRA. So going forward, I think we could do without that. And if we build back the trust, there's probably more money in Delray Beach than there's ever been. There's certainly way more money than when Francis started this in 1990. So I think you can get a donor base going again once we build that, that trust back. So this is a wonderful opportunity. I want to thank everybody for that.
Very good.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'd like to just say, there are a lot of good people in Delray. There are a lot of volunteers who want a good community that have come here for the arts, that have come here for more than restaurants. They've come here for the culture. And I look forward to the day when the nonprofits can work together as a team to make a better community.
Thank you. All right. I think we have our work, walking order, so I'm going to go ahead and close the meeting. Meeting adjourned. Okay.
Recognized, recognized.
You're recognized.
I know it's difficult.
What does that mean?
I want to personally thank those of you who invited us. You invited us. And I acknowledge that the mayor is not in agreement with having been invited or in anything we're saying. One thing I think we can agree on is we don't agree on much. We had a lawsuit and you had a lawsuit. And together, we decided it was, well, maybe you didn't. But the majority decided that it was in the best interest of the community to move forward. And whether you agreed or you didn't agree, the body agreed. And whether there's among us who felt they wanted to pursue it, we agreed as a group that it was not in the best interest of the community. We both had allegations and they were both very strong. Only the court of law will know who would have won. But I can tell you, in no court of law would Delray Beach have won. In no court of law would the citizens of Delray Beach have won. This settlement on both of our sides, recommended by people who cared for both of our sides, decided that this truly was the first step to moving forward. And that's what we look toward. You are the mayor, so you have to be here. I know Shelley Petrolia is not. We are. And what we want to do moving forward is put the allegations, not before the court. We chose not to do that. So when you decide to try the case in this arena after having agreed that it was done, it was unfair. We will not respond to it. We think we would have won and you think you would have won. Let's call it a day. Let's call it a day.
I don't disagree. I agree with you. But I think that the real losers for what happened here were the, were the taxpayers.
Forgiveness comes lightly in all of our lives.
I didn't interrupt you?
No, you didn't. You just didn't recognize me.
I didn't, I looked around the table. I didn't see it. Didn't see that you were looking for a recognition. I would have recognized you, Ms. Burck. I wasn't ignoring you. I recognized you each, everybody that came forward. I thought we were finished. It wasn't anything that was intended. So don't, don't, don't go down that path because it's not the truth. I mean, I recognized everybody and I've given everybody up here respect. I just happen to have a very different opinion. And I am entitled to that opinion.
Of course.
And, and it's, and it's something that I'm... Would you like the floor again?
No, you go ahead. But I do want it after you're through.
No, I think it's going to be done. Take the floor and I'm going to end it.
What was your last sentence?
You just go right ahead. Finish.
You said that you have your opinion and we have ours. And that is absolutely true. But the litigated piece of your opinion and the non-litigated piece of my opinion no longer has a platform for discussion. You, as the leader of this group, agreed to settle, as did we. It's over. It's over. And it's not fair for you to continue to espouse one side while our agreement is firmly implanted in accepting the fate of a dual agreement by which neither party is supposed to malign the other. And there is no way we can be invited to a table in which that climate continues to exist. And so we beg you to please stop.
I will continue to express my opinions moving forward. I will continue to express my opinions as I feel fit moving forward. I'm not bound by anything. I'm not bound by any kind of, I didn't make any agreement. I will continue to do that because I think it's just as important for those that basically are going to be holding the ball here to understand how we got to this point. We have not had that opportunity until today. So it's very important that the, that the public understands what happened. And there's more to it than just that, that I didn't even bring up about the artwork that's missing. But I'm not going that, that direction. I feel very important right now that we just end it. We end it as we, as we're here. I think that's the end of it, okay? Thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.